I'll call the regular meeting of Oak Ridge City Council for October to order. We're glad that you're here with us tonight or watching on TV. Our invocation is going to be delivered by Pastor Will Connor of the Oak Ridge Kern Methodist Church. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Oak Ridge High School senior Anna Berwin, who's also Youth Advisory Board Chair. So if everyone would please stand.
Pastor Connor.
If you are so inclined, I invite you to join me in prayer. Creating and boundless God, today I come to you from this humble place of governance in this beautiful corner of your world to ask for your guidance, your wisdom, and your blessing. Each one comes here from different places with different burdens that are carried. Some are facing struggles at home, a sick spouse, a child struggling with substance misuse, personal battles known only to the heart. Especially this day, many in our own community carry deep concerns about their employment with the shutdown of the federal government. There are other struggles that are carried, some of which will be recognized tonight: mental illness, breast cancer, fire. There are also celebrations for anniversaries, for contributions to our community, prospects for economic growth, considerations for fundings for schools. In all of this, reminded the words written by the Psalmist, "Unless it is the Lord who builds the house, the builder's work is pointless; unless it is the Lord who protects the city, the guard on duty is pointless." Therefore, O God, I pray for our nation, that you would help our leaders and people come together to build a house and a nation that works for all people, to build bridges across deep difference, promote peace. I pray for our community and ask for your work in building a better community. I ask for your work in building a closer community. I ask for your work and provision to protect our city and all who live, work, and play here. And I pray especially tonight for our city council. In all matters that come before the council tonight, I ask for your guidance for our council members. I ask for your wisdom, and I ask for your blessing upon them and their families. I ask also that each one keeps in their hearts and minds those for whom today is a struggle. Lead us, O blessed God. You live, you reign forever. Amen.
Amen.
Anna?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Back to the game, girl. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Roll call, ma'am clerk.
Mayor Pro Tim Dotson.
Here.
Councilmember Gleason. Mayor Gooch.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Hensley.
Here.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
All right, first item of business, ma'am clerk.
Under proclamations and public recognitions, we have a proclamation recognizing the 10th anniversary of the Manhattan Project National Historical Park.
Moved to accept. Moved and seconded, all those in favor who came to saying aye.
Aye.
There are none opposed. I'm going to ask Ms. Amy Fitzgerald to present the proclamation.
Mayor, members of council, I'm Amy Fitzgerald. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the City of Oak Ridge, and we are, this year, on November 13th, having an event to kick off a series of events in Oak Ridge to commemorate the 10th anniversary of the Manhattan Project National Historical Park. The park was established in 2015, and the kickoff event, and many of you were there, was November 12th, 2015. So we are going to have a series of events that day. Our kickoff event is going to be from 11:00 to 12:00, the morning of November 13th. It's going to be at the Conference Center. All of the museums in Oak Ridge that day are going to be free and open to the public. And then at 5:00, the AMC is going to be having a free showing of the Oppenheimer movie. So I wanted to thank you for approving this proclamation, and many of you may not remember, but this was a long time coming. Senator Alexander and his staff and our congressional delegation worked for many years to get the legislation passed. And back in 2007, when the National Park Service conducted their special resource study, initially, they were concerned about having more than one site, particularly because of the ownership of the facilities, some of which were still having environmental challenges. So I want to publicly thank the Department of Energy for their partnership and the strength of their partnership with the National Park Service, because if it weren't for their leadership in convincing our delegation that the park could be established, it probably would not be here. So the city council is commemorating the 10th anniversary of the establishment of the Manhattan Project National Historical Park on November 13th. So I would like to invite the community to come out and participate in that commemoration. And I would like to ask Eric Olds, the manager of the Oak Ridge Environmental Management Program for DOE, to come up and accept the proclamation behalf of the City of Oak Ridge.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next proclamation, ma'am clerk.
We have a proclamation recognizing the Emery Valley Center on its 70th anniversary.
Seconded, all those in favor who came to saying aye. There are none opposed. Going to ask Mr. Dotson to present the proclamation.
I know we have a representative.
So I've got a close affiliation with the Emery Valley Center. They do so much good in our community, everything from educating and working with our young folks at the Early Learning Center, which is terrific, but also housing assistance as well as placing people in jobs and education. So they touch every portion of our community, and we really are grateful for everything that the Emery Valley Center does to contribute back to the City of Oak Ridge. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You want to say a few words?
Yes, actually, we are having an anniversary breakfast on November 6th. It's 7:00 a.m., I believe, at Emery Valley Center, and the community is welcome to come. I was originally with YARC, and now I'm the advocacy specialist at Emery Valley Center. And the YARC started at Emery Valley Center 70 years ago, so we are reemerging. So it's just a great opportunity to come and to learn more about it. As Gemma said, we serve individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities from birth to death, and so I couldn't be more proud of what we do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next proclamation, ma'am clerk.
A proclamation designating October 25th, 2025, as NAMI Walks Day.
Seconded, all those in favor who came to saying aye. I'm going to ask Ms. Smith to present the proclamation.
It starts out saying, "The National Alliance of Mental Illness is the nation's largest grassroots mental health organization dedicated to building better lives for millions of Americans about mental illness." And the NAMI Walks is the organization's charitable fundraising activity. Would one of you like to explain what the Oak Ridge NAMI chapter is doing besides that? And I think you have a mission.
Well, of course, our mission is to stamp out the stigma associated with mental illness to help, particularly help family members who are struggling with their loved ones' illness. Stigma's a really big, big issue around mental illness, and we're trying to work to help to stop that. And we work really hard and do lots of presentations, do lots of tabling events. We'll be at the All Abilities Fair this week with our table and also making a presentation. Kathy, would you like to say something?
Just real quick, with your support groups or families, with your education and advocacy and how we're doing, what we're missing or what, just to give people a sense of what we're doing.
We would like to welcome everyone here to join us on the 25th at our NAMI Walk. It's open to everyone. The more people we have, the better it will be to help get a raise awareness in the community of the needs of people with mental illness. And I happen to have some flyers. But you're welcome both teams. Well, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you for what you're doing. Next proclamation, ma'am clerk.
A proclamation designating October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Moved for approval.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor who came to saying aye. Aye.
Mayor and council, hello. Thank you for this opportunity. As most of you know, I am one in eight. I am a breast cancer survivor. I was diagnosed in November of 2018, and here I am, almost seven years out. I am beyond blessed and honored to give this proclamation to a fellow sister. She also got cancer for Christmas last year, and I'm very blessed to be able to honor her. So Mary Norman, would you like to go on ahead and come up? Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
I would just like to encourage everyone to get your cancer screenings, whether it's mammograms, colonoscopies, whatever it is. It saved my life. I don't know how yours was found, but it's important, and it takes a community of friends and family to take care of us while we're recuperating. And I'm happy to say I'm cancer-free and my hair is growing back.
A proclamation designating October 2025 as Fire Prevention Month.
Moved for approval. Seconded. Moved and seconded, all those in favor who came to saying aye. Aye. I'm going to ask Mr. Hensley to present the proclamation. The chief Solomon.
I'd like to read a few words from the proclamation, and I promise I won't read the whole proclamation. The Great Chicago Fire of 1871 killed more than 250 people and left 100,000 homeless. This Prestigal Fire also roared through the northeast Wisconsin, burning down 16 towns, killing 752 people and scorching 1.2 million acres, making it the most devastating forest fire in American history. In 1920, President Woodrow Wilson issued the first national fire prevention proclamation. The President of the United States has signed a proclamation proclaiming a national observance every year since 1925, making it the longest-running public health and safety observance on record. And I'd like to say that some of my proudest votes are in support of the Fire Department and the Police Department, so this is a real honor to present this to you.
Chief, few words?
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to our fire marshal, Deputy Chief Tony Grandy. I'll let him say a few words.
The only reason he does that is because what we call community risk reduction, fires falls under the Fire Prevention Office, just what we do. So this year, the NFPA, every year the NFPA gives us a model to use, and this year it's charge into fire safety. And charging to fire safety deals with the charging of your electronic device. How many of you have an electronic device? Raise your hand. Okay, how many of you charge this on your bed? Stop. All right? So we talk about some certain things using the appropriate charging device, listed devices, charging it on a hard flat piece. Don't overcharge it. Simple things. I know there are some. I just saw one. Stick these in their back pockets. Don't do that. It bends, and when you bend, you break connections, and that creates problems. So what charge into fire safety is our theme this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next proclamation, ma'am clerk.
A proclamation recognizing Councilmember Chuck Hope for his election as chairman of the Energy Communities Alliance.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, all those in favor who came to saying aye. Aye. I'm going to just read a couple of paragraphs from this, because I want everyone to understand how important the Energy Community Alliance is. It's the only not-for-profit membership organization of local governments and communities that host or adjacent to or impacted by nuclear facilities and the United States Department of Energy activities. ECA brings together local government officials to share information, establish policy positions, and promote community interest to address an increasingly complex set of constituent environmental, regulatory, and economic development needs. And on September 23rd, 2025, Councilman Hope was elected chair of ECA for a two-year term beginning January 1st, 2026. And one of the reasons that ECA is so important, particularly for Oak Ridge, we are the only host city for DOE where every one of its facilities and its employees are inside the city limits. We're the only city in the country as a host city. And that, we're very proud of that. That also brings questions and issues to the forefront. ECA is a nationwide organization, and it is a real honor for Oak Ridge to be represented by our friend and colleague, Mr. Chuck Hope. Chuck, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate all the recognition from you all. Certainly not necessary, but I do appreciate the recognition. I've been on ECA for about a decade now as the city council's representative of that and as being the elected body here in Oak Ridge. I was put onto the executive board about two, about three years ago now, and then just recently was elected the chair. I've enjoyed that. It's gave me a much wider perspective to understand not only our issues here in Oak Ridge and how we work and interact with our Department of Energy counterparts on the reservation, but it's also showed me the recognition of what they do across the country at all the other facilities. And that's vitally important for us to understand that. We have a unique relationship here, and proof of that is how they've taken, and again, I'm going back to my old school, Eric Olds is in the room, he'll make cringe a little bit, but it's K-25. It's always been K-25. It'll always be K-25. The ETT Park has been reindustrialized, and we see the proof of that across our community with all the new companies that are being announced almost on a weekly basis that are wanting to come in with the new nuclear initiatives. Those things would not have happened if EM wasn't on board and reindustrialized that area, was able to tear the gases diffusion plants down and put that property back in use for us as citizens of Oak Ridge. So with that, I take that honor very seriously, and I'll do my best to represent us, Oak Ridge, the next two years as the ECA chair.
Next, item of business, ma'am clerk.
The Consent Agenda.
I would like to remove items E and F from the consent agenda, so we can discuss them. I would like to remove items E and F from the consent agenda so we can discuss them.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the remaining items?
Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. We are on item E under the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
Okay. Give me just a second to get there. Okay. All right. A resolution authorizing the city to apply for and accept if awarded a transportation planning grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation and expressing support for a study of Central Avenue and a portion of East Tennessee Avenue adjacent to Jackson Square.
Move for approval.
Second. Ms. Smith.
Yes. This is, this is a planning activity. And back in the day, the community often knew when there was a planning activity of this nature going on. But we don't have the kind of public awareness in the community anymore. So I wanted to make sure that if this grant is awarded, the planning activity would have public involvement and input so the community knows what we're, what we're thinking, what's being considered.
Yes, I'll say that it will. I mean, one of the questions in the application is to identify stakeholder groups that should be involved in the process. And so once we do have someone under contract, there will be public engagement as part of the planning process.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, does that, one question.
Ms. Chancellor.
Ms. Williams, does that mean it's going to come to the planning commission and we'll get to look at it? And?
It certainly can.
Pardon?
It certainly can.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it should.
And I would like to say this is a follow-up, you may recall, to an item that we covered in a work session. So where we looked at some on-street parking design. So this is kind of the next step in that, in that progress.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion is to approve. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? There are none. Resolution is adopted. Next item, Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing an agreement with Clark Nixon Incorporated, Johnson City, Tennessee, for own-call architectural services in an amount not to exceed $37,000 for the design of new offices and renovation of the lobby in the Recreation Building at the Civic Center.
Move for approval.
Second. Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yeah, this is also a planning activity. And the, the emphasis of the discussion is on providing new designs for offices in the Recreation Center. But in, whenever I visit that area, I'm aware of people waiting in that lobby area for children who are in some sort of athletic practice or swimming lessons or something like that. And I think that it's pretty important to plan for the care and feed, care, not necessarily feeding, of the, of the public in that space to make sure that it's, that it works well for the, for members of the public who are there. And wanted to make sure that was on the list of activity, list of work for the architect and maybe public involvement on that as well.
Yeah, well, certainly, that's a large area and especially if you take a look at the front counter, there's a lot of area behind that. So that would be kind of, you know, the area that they're looking at for the additional office space. But it is a, we want to make that an inviting area and something that, you know, people want to, to, to hang out when they're waiting for sporting events like I have many times at a pool out in front. So we definitely, that is a portion of it. If you would like some public involvement in the, in that conversation, we can certainly do that. It might change the scope of the project at the end, but.
It might be of the matter of making sure that regular customers of the Rec Center are aware and can make their thoughts available to the architect.
Yeah, glad to do that. We'll be happy to make that happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion is to approve the resolution. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
With any opposed? There are none. Resolution is adopted. Next item of business, Madam Clerk.
Under public hearings and first reading of ordinances, we have an ordinance to amend ordinance 16-2025, which ordinance provides for a budget and appropriations for municipal purposes for the fiscal year which began July 1st, 2025 by adopting a budget and adopting appropriations by amending said appropriations and an official public hearing will happen on second reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Bates.
Good evening, Council. I'm bringing forth an ordinance amendment so that we can amend the budget quarterly as opposed to doing it once a year. It just provides for greater transparency and oversight of the budget on an ongoing basis instead of one time at the end of the fiscal year. So I do need to amend the number, however. So we need a movement to amend on the floor and correct the ordinance. Where it says drug fund fiscal year 2026, it's listed at 54.5. It actually needs to be $50,062.50. So we need a motion on the floor to do that.
Some move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
With any opposed? There are none.
Okay. Any questions about the ordinance?
Any other questions? Ms. Chancellor?
No.
All right. We're on the board. Motion is to approve.
Thank you.
The amendment is approved on first reading and second reading in November.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend the comprehensive plans land use plan for parcel 038.00 Anderson County Tax Map 106A Group B 106 Pratt Lane from our residential to be general business and a public hearing is required tonight.
Move for approval. Second. Moved and seconded, need a motion to open the public hearing. Second. Segmented, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The public, the public hearing is open if anyone, the audience wishing to.
Aye.
Segmented, need a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Please.
Hi, good evening, members of council. Our next two items are both about the same activity, which includes amendment of the PUD at the corner of Lafayette and South Illinois Avenue that city council approved a few months ago. The developer of the PUD is requesting to add an additional property, 106 Pratt Lane, into that PUD. This first item is a land use map amendment to change the land use designation of that property from our residential to be business. The second agenda item, which we'll go over in a moment, is related to the rezoning and amendment of the PUD. But in front of you now is the land use map amendment. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Ms. Smith, yeah.
The, I'm, I'm, I'm having problems because I lost the internet on my phone, on my iPad. But, but I was wondering why the rezoning applies to the, basically the driveway for 106 Paris Lane. It seems like that's going to, that should remain as basically part of the residential neighborhood and not necessarily become business. But I, I don't understand the, the whole process of how this rezoning works. Looking, looking to understand that, why that would become zone, you know, become part of the land use map for something other than residential.
So both the land use map amendment and the rezoning apply to the entire parcel, 106 Pratt Lane, which includes a little flag stem, as I would call it, with the driveway out onto Pratt Lane? I will say one of the conditions in the next item that we'll discuss states that there will be no access into the PUD from Pratt Lane. But the rezoning and land use amendment are really a function of the fact that those are the limits of the piece of property of the parcel.
Okay, so there's no way to amend the land use and zoning of, of a single lot for two different zones?
You could. I mean, you, there is such a thing as split zoning or a split land use that is possible, but that's not what was requested or has been presented at this point.
Yeah, well, I would think, I would think it would be preferable over the long run if that area was designated, still designated a residential so that it could, so that there'd be no expectation that somebody could use it in the future for business in spite of the fact that the current, the current rezoning would ask for it to be kept, for, not for non-business use, but for, for no access. But, but I can imagine that somebody in the future might want to ask for that to be changed.
True.
If, if the zoning didn't, didn't forbid it. And so that, that's something I would like to see if that could be separated out as split zoning, as you put it.
All right. Other questions? Any comments from members of the Planning Commission?
Yeah, one comment.
All right. Ms. Chancellor.
When Mr. Chin was in the Planning Commission meeting talking about this and that access, he, he mentioned and it does not show in the plan here and it's not official, but he did say that that particular house, he may leave there for his offices and use the driveway just to get to his office and it wouldn't be in access to the, to the development. But that's, that's based on his comments and not necessarily official.
All right. And this was approved by the Planning Commission 7-0, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
All right. Other, other questions or comments? This is first reading. Seeing none, the motion is to approve and we're on the board. I six, no seven, no negatives, and it is adopted on first reading. Next item, Ms. Williams.
So this item is a, the rezoning of 106 Pratt Lane and then in conjunction with that, an amendment to the previously approved PUD, which you can see on the screen. In addition to adding the 106 Pratt Lane parcel into the PUD, there are also several amendments shown. It's still a commercial planned unit development, but we have a slightly different alignment of buildings near the, furthest north off Lafayette. There are three, a multi-tenant building with three tenants shown. The building closest to Illinois Avenue is now shown as two tenants pulled up closer to Illinois Avenue. Still on the corner, a car wash is proposed. I'll say that access was an important part of the conversation about this PUD. Originally, there is no change proposed to the access with this amendment than what was previously approved. And as with the other PUD, there are several conditions the Planning Commission has recommended which are included in your ordinance. These include some that are left from the previous PUD, including working with the city's engineering staff to identify the best design for safety at the right-in, right-out entrance on Lafayette Drive. The second is to add an evergreen vegetative buffer along Paris Lane to reduce the impact of the development on residents across the street. The third, as we discussed previously, is that vehicle access onto Pratt Lane is prohibited. And finally, the new plan shows really the rear of the buildings on Illinois facing Illinois with the parking behind them. And so we've included a condition which the developer is in favor of, so that the building facades facing South Illinois are similar in appearance to a front facade, so we're not seeing rear of buildings along that road as you're driving in. Those are the conditions. Again, the Planning Commission did recommend approval unanimously of this item and I can take any questions if you have them.
Questions, Ms. Williams.
We do need a motion and a second.
Some move.
Second. Thank you. All right. Ms. Smith.
Yeah. Again, I'm having trouble because I can't open the agenda package anymore. But.
I think he's working on it.
Okay. Yeah, well, it's telling me the network doesn't exist, so I don't know what that means. And.
He switched your phone.
And the, I think this was addressed by the Planning Commission, but I can't look at it to see. Is, there is now a requirement, or there's now an expectation that there would be some sort of buffer along Paris Lane?
Correct. An evergreen screening buffer.
Okay. That's just screening, but, but no, but, but no setback or?
The setback that has been requested and was previously approved is 15 feet from Paris Lane and then within that there is required to be a landscape evergreen buffer.
Okay. And does, it appeared to me that the Pratt Lane property is now part of the PUD as something other than a house that could be used as an office. Is that, is that correct or did I misinterpret the map?
That's right. At, at full development, what's shown in that PUD plan is, is what would be required. Mr. Chin did mention that he may continue to rent the house in the interim prior to developing the full PUD.
So it is part of the development ultimately?
Yes.
Okay. And there's a, the map showed a sidewalk northeast of the end of Pratt, of Paris Lane. And I couldn't figure out what that sidewalk was doing and connecting to in the PUD map.
That may be left from the previous iteration of where buildings were, but I will bring that up as a staff comment.
Yeah. I was, I was trying to figure out what it was doing. Okay. Thank you. Those, those are my questions and I, I am concerned about the, about that flag to 106 Pratt. And I think I'd like to consider the possibility of getting that changed on second reading.
That's something we can look at for second reading. The developer expressed no interest in using that area. In fact, talked about, talked about potentially selling it to the adjacent owners if they were interested in it. So that's, that's reasonable and we'll look at that before second reading.
And that's usually what we do in that kind of situation. So that makes sense. Thank you.
That's it.
All right. Before we, before we vote, I've neglected to call for a, a public hearing, so I'll ask for a motion that we open a public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, a public hearing is open for anyone who wishes to be, to be heard. It's on.
You're good.
We, we regularly talk about residential housing needs, affordable housing, workforce housing. We have a district here that's zoned residential, close to all the city services, walkable to some of the potential employment opportunities on a stretch of our city street that has empty commercial property and we're going to rezonate for business. Somehow those two factors don't seem to line up. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Cole Closier. Anyone else wishing to address counsel? Seeing none, need a vote to close the public hearing. Moved and seconded, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're now back on the motion to approve on first reading. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we're on the board. I six, no nays, and it is approved on first reading. Next item, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend ordinance number two titled The Zoning Ordinance of the City of Oak Ridge, Tennessee. Let me finish. No, I'm trying to figure out if we've, if I've skipped one. No, I'm good. Okay.
The C.
There's no C, like on my sheet. That's why I was.
More on this one.
Yeah. Okay. I'm just making sure we got everything. Okay. And a public hearing is required, so, okay. Yeah, that's right.
Is there a motion to open public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, anyone wishing to address counsel for the public hearing? Seeing none, motion to close public hearing.
Some move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Ms. Williams.
This zoning ordinance text amendment is intended to address the fact that under our current ordinance, there is no zone where a developer could buy right, construct a townhome development where the townhomes are on individual lots for sale. Under a multifamily zoning, you could do more of a multifamily apartment or condo-style townhomes, but no zone without the use of a PUD allows for the development of townhomes on individual lots to be sold. So this text amendment amends our existing R3 medium-density residential zoning district to allow for that by making some changes to density, lot coverage, and setbacks for the shared walls. The Planning Commission recommended in favor of this text amendment, they also passed a companion amendment to our subdivision regulations to allow for a lot width that could accommodate single-family attached dwellings or townhomes. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Ms. Council?
Yeah, I may have missed this. Did we go ahead and vote on C?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Ma'am.
So this would allow, in the R3 zone, basically, a subdivision could, or a development could be built, attached town homes, or of attached town homes, and each one would be on its separate lot, would be basically, the buildings would be designed and the lot lines would be determined after we knew exactly where the shared wall was going to be. Okay. And does this, does this allow additional dwellings on a single lot that currently isn't zoned for, isn't zoned this way? That somebody could subdivide one lot and place two homes on it and split it with that?
Yes.
Okay.
You could do that.
Okay. And how does it work in the MDO district? Is that, there's already, there are already limits on, or there are already special rules for setbacks and so forth. I suspected in an MDO district that's R3, it would allow a lot more flexibility in the way, in the way things are designed, that you could have, you could convert, you could convert a single-family lot into a two-lot condo or something.
Potentially, that's something I could map before second reading. I don't think there's a huge amount of R3 lots in the MDO district, but I could look at that in more detail prior to second reading.
And has there been consideration made for doing this with R2 as well?
We did consider it. Ultimately, the R2 district is listed as low-density residential, and the kind of density that you need for town homes, we felt ultimately exceeded that, low density. However, that is something that we could look at in the future.
Okay, okay. I think this is a good idea. I was just trying to understand some of the details, so. And again, I can't read my ordinance right now, so, thank you.
Ms. Hansel.
Does this mean that two adjoining property owners could decide to build a zero lotline structure where they have essentially a zero lotline with two different owners on existing lots?
Yes. If both lots were zoned R3, and I will say that, you know, shared walls drives additional fire requirements that aren't the case for other types of development, but yes. I mean, if that situation existed, yes.
Okay, so a family could actually have two lots and build an adjoining two houses? I like that.
Other questions?
So we do need a public hearing on this one as well.
Okay.
Right now? What? Yes.
We just had it.
Did you have one?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just making sure, because I threw everyone off, and I didn't have it in my notes.
We've got you back on course here.
Awesome.
All right. Was there a motion and a second on this one?
This one.
Okay, all right.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. All right, are there other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion is to approve on first reading, and we're on the board. Six ayes, no nays, and it is approved on first reading. All right. Next item, Business Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend, ordinance number two, titled "The Zoning Ordinance of the City of Oak Ridge, Tennessee," by amending subsection E of section 8.01, titled IND-1 Industrial Districts, section 8.02, titled IND-2 Industrial Districts, and section 8.03, titled IND-3 Industrial Districts, to allow for zero lotline setbacks for the sides and rear when abutting parcels in the same zoning district and a public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, keep saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to discuss this particular ordinance with counsel? Seeing none, need a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, keep saying aye.
Aye.
So we are back on the motion to approve the ordinance. Ms. Williams.
All right. This zoning ordinance text amendment is also about attached buildings, in this case, in industrial districts. This was driven by, we had a situation where an industrial development proposes to build two buildings adjacent to each other, but because of their funding source, require two separate lots for those buildings. So essentially, one large building with a lot line down the middle. We already allow this in our commercial districts. Jackson Square is a good example of that, where you have lot lines going through buildings. Also, some businesses on Talmida. This zoning ordinance text amendment would allow the same if properties were adjacent industrial districts. As we noted before, that does drive additional fire and code requirements, but those would be enforced as the property was developing. That's it for that. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Any questions?
So the main focus is for people who have a situation where they want to subdivide a pair of buildings or a building. It's not necessarily a notion that new industries could come in and expect a zero lot line.
In, under this ordinance, potentially, yes. If they're abutting the same district and they meet all codes related to that for fire protection.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion is to approve, and we're on the board. I six, no nays, and resolution is approved on first reading. Next item, Business Madam Clerk.
Under final adoption of ordinances, we have an ordinance to amend, ordinance number two, titled "The Zoning Ordinance of the City of Oak Ridge, Tennessee," by amending the zoning map, which is made a part of the ordinance, by changing the zoning district of Anderson County Tax Map 099G, Group A, parcel 047.00, located at 624 West Outer Drive, containing approximately .27 acres from R2 Low Density Residential District in the Manhattan District overlay to B1 Neighborhood Business District, and this one also requires a public hearing.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Need a motion to open the public hearing. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, keep saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any member of the audience wishing to address this item before counsel? Seeing none, motion to close the public hearing? Moved and seconded. All those in favor, keep saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, Ms. Williams, back to you again.
So this is second reading, so just as a reminder, this is a rezoning request submitted by the owner of the gas station there at the corner of West Outer and Illinois, requesting to zone the adjacent property, 624 West Outer, which he also owns, to B1 for potential expansion of commercial development onto that site. Take any questions if you have them.
Any questions? Seeing none, the motion is to approve, and we're on the board. I six, no nays. The ordinance is adopted on second and final reading. Next item, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend, ordinance number two, titled "The Zoning Ordinance of the City of Oak Ridge, Tennessee," by amending the following sections, Article 2, titled Definitions, to update the definition of portable storage containers, Section 3.18, titled Temporary Use Permits, Subsection H, titled Portable Storage Container Regulations, for the purpose of making portable storage containers an accessory use in non-industrial zones for a defined time period and for specific circumstances with a temporary use permit or building permit, and Subsection C, titled Permitted Accessory Uses of Section 8.01, titled IND-1 Industrial Districts, Section 8.02, titled IND-2 Industrial Districts, and Section 8.03, titled IND-3 Industrial Districts, to add portable storage containers as an accessory use without time restraint provided containers are screened from adjacent and/or abutting residential districts, and a public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Need a mo... That's right.
Second.
All those, okay, in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any member of the public wishing to address this particular item? Seeing none, a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, keep saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
The title says it, is a text amendment to clarify the definition and use of portable storage containers.
Ms. Hansel.
Over here where it says, I guess it's on page 105, portable storage containers provided containers are screened from adjacent and/or abutting residential districts. Do the setbacks apply to the portable containers?
Yes. Typically setbacks apply to accessory structures.
I didn't see it written anywhere. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? The motion is to approve on second and final reading. We're on the board. I six, no nays, and the ordinance is approved. Second reading. Next item, Business Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend, Title 14, titled "Zoning and Land Use Control," Chapter 5, titled "Storm Water Management," Section 14-506, titled "Permanent Storm Water Management Operation, Maintenance, and Inspection of the Code of Ordinances, City of Oak Ridge, Tennessee," by amending subsection 2A to require temporary stabilization of steep slopes when activity on the slope has temporarily or permanently ceased.
Move to approve.
Moved and seconded. Public hearing required, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Pesmer, you're recognized, sir.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I think the title kind of explained exactly what this is, but essentially, we are asking for a modification of Title 14, Chapter 5, the Storm Water Management Code, to require steep slopes on a site to be temporarily stabilized, not later than seven days after construction activity on slope is temporarily or permanently ceased. This is keeping in with TDEX requirements, and we recommend the change in order to help with some of the issues we've had in the past.
Ms. Hansel.
Tom, I'd like to ask a question about a certain circumstance that I'm aware of. If you've got a lot, and the lot is basically flat, and they clear the lot, but there's a 30% slope on somebody else's property adjacent to it, and the runoff all goes down that side, what happens there?
Well, I mean, obviously, this section of code is really to prevent erosion coming off of a construction site, so if there's no material that's moving from one site to the other...
It's moving, what I'm saying is there is material moving from the essentially flat area, slight slope, running over on the other property that has a 30% slope.
Yeah, well, I think the goal at that point would be put protections at the top of the slope to make sure that it didn't transmit over the...
They'd have to put sandbags and stuff or whatever out there to prevent it from going over on the property.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, the motion is to approve on second reading. We're on the board. I six, no nays, and the ordinance is approved. Next item, Business Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, City of Oak Ridge, Tennessee, Title 1, titled General Administration, Chapter 2, titled Miscellaneous, Section 1-201, titled Administrative Organization of the City, to delete the phrase Information Services Department and replace it with Information Technology Department, to change the name of the department from Information Services to Information Technology.
Moved and seconded. Any comments?
Not unless you have questions.
Okay. Are there any questions? All right. Motion is to approve, and we're on the board. I six, no nays, and the ordinance is approved on second and final reading. Thank you. Next item, Business Madam Clerk.
A resolution approving up to $80,000 in funding assistance to the Oak Ridge schools for the replacement of the Woodland Elementary School portable classroom building.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Bates?
Hi, again, Counsel. For your consideration, there's a resolution to approve additional funding to Oak Ridge schools. Dr. Borchers met with Mr. Heeman in regard to the Woodland Elementary portable. It was evidently a water feature, so they have $300,000 that we've already appropriated for their CIP that they're planning on using for the first part of that payment, and they've requested the 7908257 from the city.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, just a question about, how long will it take to replace that building? I think it is in our notes, but...
It says it's going to be installed within 10 to 12 weeks.
10 to 12 weeks, okay. I'm just kind of concerned what's going to happen with the students who are going to be using that facility. Okay, 10 to 12 weeks. Thank you.
You can talk to your school board. Mr. Hope?
Yeah, I had a good conversation with the principal of Woodland today, just to make sure what was going on. That building is way past its standard life expectancy now. They have limited and restricted the use of that building because of some of the safety hazards of that particular structure right now. There's actually no students actually in there, other than some very limited circumstances. And so it's going to be used, the new structure would be, give them the capability of having three new additional classrooms with some office space. So the use of that building has been looked at, and Woodland is like a lot of other schools, limited on classrooms that they need. They're actually using some very creative ingenuity to try to get some of their class requirements done with what they've got without the use of that portable building, so it will help make the flow of Woodland much easier with the portable.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, Mr. Hope. Any other questions? Ms. Ma'am?
Yeah, we discussed this at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
We did.
And it's clear that, you know, this is what it costs to replace a portable classroom building, but I'm still troubled that we're basically permanently using portable classrooms and spending this kind of money on just another new portable classroom and not something that truly is designed to be permanent. So that's something that I'd like our school board and school administration to be cognizant of that as a concept, that they shouldn't be using these things permanently.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion is to approve. We're on the board. I six, no nays, and the resolution is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bates.
Thank you, Counsel.
Can we silence our phones, please? Next item, Business Madam Clerk.
A resolution designating Reagan Luke's as the next honorary youth poet laureate to serve for a one-year term and amending city policy C-600 with respect to the youth poet laureate's term to be more in line with the school calendar.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Mayor and Counsel, I'm going to have Lillian Schaefer, who is our outgoing youth poet laureate, introduce our incoming poet. Before we do that, are there any questions?
Why don't you address the policy change?
So we changed the nomination period to open with the beginning of the school year so that we can draw more attention to the program. So the youth poet laureate will now run from October to October.
Thank you, Ms. Fortner.
I'd like to introduce our new youth poet laureate, Reagan Luke.
Sorry, you're going to have to give us your name.
Oh, I'm Lillian Schaefer.
And what's your address, Lillian?
I live on 103 Forest Berry Street.
Thank you.
I would like to introduce Reagan Luke, the new youth poet laureate. She's a sophomore at Oak Ridge High School, and she's going to reach you a poem. She's a sophomore at Oak Ridge High School, and she's going to read you a poem.
Hello, I'm Reagan Luke's, and I wrote a poem to...
Oh, before you, okay, and your address?
I live on 103 Wesley Lane in Oak Ridge.
There you go, wow. Let's hear your poem.
You wake up in this town, you make yourself a cup of coffee with a frown. Upset to wake up with an early rise, you sip your coffee while you try to open your eyes. You drive to work in this town, the turnpike is the road which you drive down. Above you are signs on street lamps celebrating this place as a historic site. You just moved to Oak Ridge, so you are surprised by the signs draped on the lights. You park in your usual spot in this town. As you open your phone, you are surprised by what you have found. You searched why Oak Ridge is so significant. Your search engine gave you an answer to why this town is so important. It has been 80 years since Oak Ridge has been a part of winning the fight with the Allies by helping start manufacturing the atomic bomb in this once-secret town. What helped America bring the enemy powers down. You sit there shocked from moving to a town with such crucial history and not even knowing it. It makes you feel patriotic a little bit. How you get to live in a town that saved our land, you are glad to get to live in a town and honor its brand.
Have we got a motion?
Some move.
Second.
I would just say that we better not have any negative votes. All those in favor and capable saying aye.
Aye.
And you are elected, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item of business, Madam Clerk.
A resolution retroactively approving the emergency contract with File Savers Data Recovery Corvallis, Montana, in the amount of $100,150 for the recovery of police video data.
Moved to approve.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Pesmer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So, this was an emergency contract that was put together after we lost access to around 60 terabytes of police video data a while back. We worked with both the Tennessee Bureau of Investigations, the FBI, to try to recover the data, and ultimately ended up going to a company called File Savers Data Recovery. They were actually able to recover all of that data, and it is, some of it is here on site, some of it's on its way back to site, on the site, so we are just asking for approval of the emergency contract that was done for this work.
Ms. Smith, did Budget Finance Committee have an opportunity to discuss that?
Yes, we did, and we were pleased to hear that we had the opportunity to spend this little for that effective result, because the lost data could have been a significant challenge.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley.
Just to make the number sound better, how many cases were recovered?
Well, there were many, many, but of cases that are somewhat still active, they're over 2,000.
There were thousands, though, and so when you take the money and divide it by 1,000 cases, it comes out like $50 per case, I believe.
Somewhere around there, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion is to approve the resolution, and we're on the board. I six, no nays, and the resolution is approved. Next item of business, Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing acceptance of a direct appropriation grant from the state of Tennessee to purchase body worn cameras for the police department in the amount of $2,500,000, and authorizing the city manager to request expansion of scope of the use of funds under said grant for all necessary items to implement a fully operational digital evidence system.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
The state of Tennessee in its FY 2526 budget earmarked $2.5 million for the city to purchase body worn cameras for the police department through a direct appropriation grant. To officially receive this grant, the city council must authorize the city to accept it. Now, in preparation for tonight's meeting, city staff learned that the scope of the grant is limited to only allowing the police department to purchase body worn cameras themselves. Cannot purchase any of the required necessary systems, equipment, technologies to implement and deploy them. So, essentially, we would be able to purchase $2.5 million of what would end up being paperweights or desk ornaments. So, the state has indicated that the city must request the assistance of its legislative representation to begin the process of expanding the scope of the use of the grant funds through legislative action. So, on behalf of the city manager, I request your approval to send letters to Lieutenant Governor McNally and Representative Scarborough. They were very crucial in securing this funding for the city from the start. We will ask for their help in expanding the grant scope to, and I will quote you what the letter reads, "Allow the police department to not only purchase the body worn cameras, but also the required hardware, software, accessories, and other related systems, equipment, and mission-critical technologies necessary to implement a fully operational digital evidence ecosystem, including but not limited to the body worn camera system, in-car video camera system, and less lethal energy weapon system."
Ms. Hensley?
Do you have an idea how much the additional equipment will cost, ballpark?
Roughly right now, the best estimate that we have in quote is about $2.2 million for everything that we need to implement this fully. Correct. It is within the same scope. We will not be asking for additional funding just to expand the scope of the use.
Okay. Any other questions for Captain Teford? Seeing none, the motion is to approve, and we're on the board. I six, no nays, and the resolution is approved, thank you, Captain. Next item of business is appearance of citizens. Citizens shall be permitted to address city council about matters that are not on the formal agenda. Any citizen wishing to do so shall raise your hand, proceed to the lectern, and after recognition, state your name and address and the purpose of your appearance before council. Comments should generally be limited to three minutes and shall relate to matters of city business. It should not generally result in a formal response or action at the time of the presentation, because in most cases, neither the council nor the staff will be prepared to respond effectively. However, I may answer questions or direct the city manager to do so, or direct the city manager to work with the citizens to effect resolution of the matter. Statements that are purely political in nature will not be allowed, such as campaign speeches or announcements of candidacy for office, nor will announcements of a civic or social event that is unrelated to city business. Are there any members of the audience wishing to address council? Yes, Ms. Wildgruber?
Marion Wildgruber, 122 Connors Drive, but I was listening quite carefully to your instructions, and the very last thing you said, announcements of civic and social events. Can I announce about the All Abilities Fair?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Oh, good, great, thank you. Well, I wanted to make a personal invitation to the entire city council and our city manager, Mr. Heeman, and actually, everybody in the community of Oak Ridge and our local communities and counties. The All Abilities Fair is going to be happening this Saturday at the Civic Center Complex. We're calling it that now because we have the City Conference Center, the Rec Center, and the Senior Center and Library. It is going to be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and it is a All Abilities Fair because it is for people with all abilities. We are going to have information for people with disabilities, for seniors, and it is about disability awareness and education. So, we're inviting everyone in the community to turn out. There's going to be education, but there's also going to be music and art and games, a kids' zone. There's going to be wheelchair basketball to try out, obstacle courses, mental health, and bistro, and free lunches, everything is free, presentations by experts. So, we are just hoping that everyone in the community will come out. The weather's going to be gorgeous, and they scheduled the UT Alabama game in the evening. Woo, you know, so there is no reason not to come out and join us. Even Mayor Frank is going to come, and Anderson County has a table. So, that is a challenge to our City of Oak Ridge officials to come out. So, I want to thank everybody. What? All right, I missed that. I want to thank everyone in our City Parks and Recs Department, especially our city council members, our city manager especially. Explorer Bridge is sponsoring a part of the event cost. We have gotten over $16,000 in monetary and in-kind donations from local companies, nonprofits, individuals. The outpouring of affection and gifts has been amazing, and over 200 volunteers will be there onsite day of to help. So, it is going, we're going to blow the roof off this town.
And why don't you give us the hours again, please?
At 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturday. Thank you so much.
Ms. Colesier?
One page? Yes. Colesier, 103 Monticello Road, Oak Ridge. Thank you for the opportunity to make a few comments. In this instance, I'm looking to the council to support the idea of a Greenway Trail easement across, as Councilman Hope said, the K-25 site. This is an idea that's been around for at least 10 years. During the course of the cleanup work, the president of UCor made the point, at least two meetings I attended, that the bridges across Papa Creek would not be demolished, and they would offer opportunity for Greenway crossing. We have a Greenway Trailhead right on the corner of Wheat Greenway, that basically on the corner of the Oclo footprint. On the opposite side, at the Blair Road or the Dela Sorchard, there's a Greenway Trailhead. With an easement across the site, this would offer an opportunity for companies that locate there to have Greenways right out their door. If you recall, Mr. Ed Petit Depage at the work session pointed out the importance of the amenities of Greenways and mountain bike opportunities for their company. After the presentation, I went up briefly and introduced myself and welcomed him to Oak Ridge on behalf of our Greenways. I said, "You've certainly chosen the right city." If Greenway is important to your employees, and his response to me was, "You know, we're starting fresh, Greenways can be a part." So, clearly, we have the opportunity now, we have the design. Engineering architects are looking at realignment of the property out there for better marketing of the empty spaces, so this is the opportunity to work directly with them. I know one of the senior engineers at DIA, VP of Civil, is well experienced in Greenway development, so appreciate the council's support in looking at this right now. The opportunity is there with the final steps in repurposing that site that they've cleaned up for $10 billion over 25 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colesier. You got a copy, there you go. Anyone else wishing to address council? Seeing none, next item of business, Madam Clerk.
Under elections and appointments, we have the confirmation of the mayoral appointments to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Hensley, why don't you read the numbers of the Budget Committee and...
So, the mayor is recommending the reappointment of Councilmember Ellen Smith as chair, Councilmember Sean Gleason, Councilmember Derek Hammond, and then pursuant to a resolution you passed last meeting, Councilmember Charlie Hensley as an alternate in the event that one of the members is absent.
Okay. All right, so any questions, any questions or discussions? Seeing none, the motion is to approve, all those in favor and capable saying aye.
Aye.
There are none opposed, next item of business, Madam Clerk.
Any announcements or scheduling? See any?
Seeing none, Ms. Heeman?
We have council requests for new business items or future briefings. Anybody?
I thought that's just what we said.
That's different.
All right.
Now, Mr. Heeman.
Ms. Heeman?
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. If you'll turn your attention to the screen. I've actually been armed with a clicker tonight. Really quickly, numbers from the Atomic Fall Fest, 6,300 in attendance, really good numbers for a first year despite having some rain. So, I want to thank our folks that worked so hard on that and look forward to next year being even bigger and better. We had our employee picnic on Thursday honoring our veterans, and I want to thank those that participated in that. You'll see, I did get a photo of the person that normally takes the photos that's been included here. She's never in a photo, so please note, the middle photo includes our communications director. We recently handed over the keys to the Armory Building, to the Free Medical Clinic, and look forward to seeing what they do with that building. They've received a number of grants, and we know they're going to do great things for the community in that building. And they are very grateful to you, city council, for supporting that project.
And the executive director expressed his thanks again to me tonight.
Great. Our SWAT team just had some 40-hour basic SWAT school last week, and you can see our officers there, Officers Black, Fritz, Gibson, Macon, Martini, Simmons became basic SWAT certified. And also, we had Fire Department Captain Brandon Payne and firefighter Josh Hoskins, who also became basic SWAT certified. So, we appreciate the time that was put into this, and honestly, hope we never have to use them, but we're glad that we're trained if that becomes necessary. Our All Abilities Fair has been announced already. You took my thunder, Marion, but I appreciate all that you have done to help organize that event, and Jana and the others on the Disability Advisory Group. We look forward to seeing that event. Police Department will have their annual Shop with a Hero event on Saturday, December 6. I know Officer Craig is involved in that, and some others in the department. For about the last three months, I have had the world's longest job interview with Jennifer Williams, and I'm pleased to announce she passed with flying colors, and we have removed the interim from her title, and pleased to announce she is now our Planning and Development Director. So, I want to thank her for the work she's done. For those of you that were not able to be at E-Tech, I did send this out to city council, but just to let you know, great energy in the room, the design, I think, was well-received, and the emphasis on making... The design, I think, was well received and the emphasis on making this a place for people and not just a collection of buildings could not have been more evident. So I'm looking forward to seeing this come out of the ground. You know, the property is under contract. I understand from our developer that he's got his financing in order and he is now in design phase, so we look forward to seeing that get started soon. I did want to go ahead and give a brief update on Nobel Medals. We had some noise violations out there on 930 and 10-1. One of those was taken as requested at the top of the hill and we got a, a larger reading at the top of the hill. So I just wanted to point that out and that has been, we've had a citation to the Administrative Hearing Officer that was issued on October the 2nd and there'll be a court date in November, December. And I do want to say, code staff met with the owner and have discussed the violation and I know they're looking at additional mitigation that they can do.
Where, where, when you say on top of the hill, where was, where was on top of the hill?
Clifton Circle.
Clifton Circle, on the road or in somebody's backyard?
I think in the backyard, was it? Yeah, backyard, yeah.
Thank you.
I also wanted to talk a little bit about Carbon Rivers. There was a citation issued to Administrative Hearing Officer on that on September 26th about rubbish weeds, inadequate building facilities. They still don't have water to that building. Expected court date on that's late November, early December. More importantly, TDEC has continued to do inspections on site. If you look at the very top picture, we also think that some chipped material from another location was actually brought onsite here in cardboard boxes. Those boxes have failed and we're in the pictures that were provided by TDEC. So I know TDEC had a compliance meeting with them. We're waiting to hear the results on that, but there were many areas from the TDEC application that were non-compliant.
Mr. Dot?
Yeah, just two questions and I think I asked these the last meeting. Are they still currently receiving? According to what you just said, they're receiving some in those boxes, but are they still receiving the blades themselves?
We are not able to, to tell if they are or are not, to be honest.
And the second one?
And why don't you explain why?
The state has been monitoring that and the state has not gotten enough information to tell if they're compliant or not compliant with that.
Well, and to follow that, my second, would we, if they are receiving those, are they continuing to recycle those blades?
The state could not tell that any materials had moved off the site.
Okay. How, how do we expedite that, Mr. Heeman?
I do not know the answer to that, Mayor Pro Tim. I'm just going to be honest.
Okay, thank you.
You know, we continue to, to ask TDEC to, to work on it and, and to enforce it and we wait to see what happens.
Okay.
Mr. Hensley?
Yeah, I took some additional aerial photographs about two weeks ago and I sent them to Ms. Williams. And it's really clear when you compare the previous ones to the ones now, there's additional storage, there's additional blade materials being stored and it's primarily around that power pole, that power line thing that goes right through the site, but there's also additional material out there on the far, on the far end also.
The far left, if you're from the viewpoint at the river.
Yes.
Right. But we'll, we'll continue, you know, a letter was written by Mayor Cresswell and myself to TDEC, so we'll continue to apply pressure where we can to try to get results from them.
Is there a possibility of getting more coordination with TDEC on there? Because we have, we have multiple agencies now.
Yes.
Working with, trying to work with this company and probably being played against each other and so forth. Any coordination going on?
Yeah, I know, I don't know, Lisa or Jennifer, if you all want to address this, but I will tell you that we're, we were made aware of some conversations that went on that we didn't know about and we're now, when there's a report issued, we're receiving that so that we know what TDEC is doing now. And I do know that George Carroll and others have talked to TDEC over time about this, so we'll continue to coordinate as best we can, but you know, there was work done by TDEC that we were not aware of and we let them know that we would like to be aware of that and they have included us on their last efforts to do compliance checks. All right, any other questions? Comments?
What is our, if, if they're, if they're bringing that, those additional materials through this, through the city by truck, what is our legal right to stop them and turn them around?
I'd have to.
I'd like it, I'd like a legal opinion on that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll ask legal to look into that.
We could certainly, I would think at the very least, we would be within our rights as a jurisdiction to stop and ensure that they are not overweight.
I do not know if we can enforce weight limits on the state roads coming in, but we can, we can ask.
We can, we can ask or we can request assistance from the Highway Patrol. For the record, Chief Smith is nodding in agreement.
Okay.
I just want to request that we take every deliberate action.
Okay.
We can.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. We would like to have a special call City Council meeting before the council work session on the 21st and the need for this comes for the time period that we have for the abrogation of the property for the airport. You'll recall, we received a 90-day timeframe that started in September, so we need to move forward or stop with the abrogation and staff's recommendation obviously is to move forward with that. So I'd like to get an MOU with the state that spells out how funds would flow. The state has offered to fund that abrogation so this property could be deeded over to Oaklo. So like to do that. And there's also another issue associated with that site, whether it would be Oaklo or anybody else on it, that Blair Road needs to be rerouted. TDOT has given us an application for a program that reroutes roads like that for economic development, industrial development projects. They have agreed to cover the cost, 100% of the cost of that and manage that project. So that would take Blair Road over to the end of the property line and realign that coming out to the turnpike and also, you know, the Hall Road would have to be realigned by DOE as part of this. So in essence, putting together an MOU for all of these pieces that need to fall into place to move that project forward.
Mr. Hensley?
Yeah, I see our city historian back there. There's a site, you might want to say that the monument that's there near Blair Road that you want to, to address and make sure it's preserved.
Can I come up and say?
Yes, sir.
You need my name and address?
Yes, sir, yes.
Gray Smith, 127 Newell Lane. The concern Charlie mentioned is the monument or the foundation of the Wheat School and that foundation of the Wheat School is to the east of where the reroute would be if you run the route directly down to the turnpike from the curve where the road goes back to the church. So if they go straight down, they'll miss that foundation. Anything to the right of that, east, west of that foundation, while there were buildings there, there's nothing left. So running the road won't make any difference. My only concern would be the foundation of the school. That's all I think we'd need to protect. Can also talk about the area up at the top where there is an open space. Oaklo has agreed to provide a parking area there and to put signs up that will interpret the history of the Wheat community. I think that is an amazing offer that they've made to us and I look forward to seeing the Wheat community recognized that way.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Heeman.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
A comment on that, I would hope the National Park Service could be involved in designing signage. Because the parks, Park Service is awfully good at telling stories, so, thanks.
Not all of their signs are accurate.
Nor do they get them done on a timely basis, but that's another one. Let me, let me just say, I, I'll be unable to attend the special call work session. As most of you know, the fourth Wednesdays, I mean, the fourth weeks of the month that have fourth Wednesdays, I'm in Nashville in hearings, that's how I make my living, practice in law, and so I'll just say I'm not really happy about the date that's been chosen, but I want everybody to know why I'm not, why I won't be here. Any other, any other business?
Who made the decision to move it?
Staff.
Well, we, we looked at the potential to move it another day and there were two other people that could not attend on that day, which is why we chose to, to leave it there.
We've, we've, we're working on, if you want to, to zoom in and?
You can't vote by zooming in.
That's true. That is true.
Yeah, I, I don't need, you know, I don't need to watch, I need to be able to talk. And again, without saying too much about it, what I'm having to do on Mondays and Tuesdays before Certificate of Need hearing on Wednesday and working late into the night on Mondays and Tuesdays, I really don't have either the time nor the patience to watch a video and sit there and not be able to comment on a, an item of this importance.
Could we move it to the first Tuesday in November?
Thank you, Scott.
You'll, you'll, yeah, you'll be beyond your 90 days. You know, we could look at the following week. I'll be, Tom and I are both at, in a conference in Florida that week, so makes it difficult on either of us, so we, we kind of exhausted all the, all the alternatives.
I meet it Friday, June.
But with due respect, there's nothing in the law that keeps you from participating by video in meetings. It's only council that is restricted from doing that.
Would you like us to look at the following week and I can join you by video?
Well, if you could look at it and if it's impossible, then that's, that's, that's fine. I, I just, I just wanted everybody to know why I won't be here on the 21st.
Okay.
We'll go back to the, we'll go back, I'll poll it around again.
I have another question. Can we, can we also review, even if we don't have approval authority, whatever MOUs and arrangements are being made by the IDB regarding Oaklo?
Yeah, I, I don't know what agreements they'll have as part of this. The property, I don't know that any of this property is going through the IDB for Oaklo, but we can look at that and if there is anything, certainly it can be shared.
Okay, thanks.
I have curiosity, there was another at least initial date proposed, was that?
It was the 23rd.
The 23rd?
It was the 20, the Thursday, the 23rd. And there were two that had told me they could not attend.
Yeah, I noted that I couldn't, but I mean, if it'll make a significant difference here, then I'll, I'll cancel that to make, make this work if it'll, I'm at.
I don't think, I don't think the, I don't think Mr. Gleason, I don't think that that's something he can do. If you can, I mean, if he's, but I.
So you're looking to have everybody here for this?
As much as possible.
Because I mean, he wouldn't be here.
No, I know, no, I know.
Right, so I'm saying, if somebody would have to be missing.
Yeah, we were going to try to do it when everyone could be here, but that is, if we could move it to the week, the next week, if Mr. Heeman's not here, then like the mayor said, he can, he could, he could participate by video.
Okay.
Thank you for that offer and that may end up being the best alternative.
Just for the record, I mean, if, if given the two options, I had something previously scheduled, but if it's this significant, then I'll, I'll, I'll adjust what I need to do to, to be present, so I just put that off right there.
I'll get with you guys tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a number of new city employees, firefighter, animal control officer, shelter attendant. You can see all the folks, recreation, treatment plan operator, actually two treatment plan operators. Also want to point out that we've got some new folks in facilities and a new maintenance technician, parks technician, a couple recreation folks and a library page. And we do have some other new city employees here. I want to point out on our back row, we've got Carrie Aiken, if she's still here. Will you stand, please, our, our new Public Works Director who has started with us, so welcome her. And we've got a few other folks in utilities and administration and also want to point out, Brian Mills has been promoted to City Engineer, Public Works Department, so congratulations to Brian. And I believe that's my last slide. So I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions for the manager? Is there a report from the city attorney?
Nothing to report. Krista Tru, we've been here a couple times, but I was pregnant, so I am not pregnant now. And I'm here for Ms. Rackard. She is out of town and I will discuss with her your request for the memo and we will get that as soon as we can.
That's fine, thank you. Any other business needing to come before council tonight? Thank you everyone for your attendance and participation and we're adjourned. I know.